Yeah, so today we have regular members David Bissard, John Welsh, our new guy Brian O'Connor, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
And myself Tom Durling, we have one alternate. Who was it? It was Austin, Gellum.
Austin.
And Todd, yeah Todd Zisson. And we are missing Dan Belkowsky today, so Todd is gonna sit in for us and...
Dan will sit in for Charlie.
Well, actually for Dan, he'll sit in for Dan and Todd will sit in for Charlie, whatever. So we have a full quorum. So I'd also like to make a motion to amend the agenda to include an appointment to replace Charlie Allen, and we'll do that under New Business. Charlie has had to resign because of work in personal matters, so he is not here today and won't be here, so we'll take care of that in New Business.
Want a second on that?
Yeah, I need a second.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Is there any discussion on that? Any discussion that would cause us to amend the...
I'm sorry, you're just making a motion to amend the agenda to add that as item what?
As item 7A.
Okay. It wasn't really what the motion was.
It's a motion to appoint a new member to replace Charlie.
Yep, okay, so that was made by Mr. D.
I made the motion.
I seconded it.
Todd seconded it.
Yes, amended to refer.
That we're putting, that we're replacing Charlie.
Made in second?
Made it second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. So let's jump right into the legal notice for 2013. Application 2013 by Meadow Street Partners LLP for Zone Text Amendment Section VD2 Drive Thrus in Commerce Park Transition Zone for Parcels with Frontage on State Highway. Can I get a motion to open the public hearing?
So, move.
Anybody have any discussion on that before we...
I'll second that motion to open.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, applicant, you wanna tell us what you're all about?
Is Austin hearing us?
Yes.
I just didn't know if he was giving a thumbs up on that or saying...
Uh, yeah.
I can give a thumbs up if you want.
Well, you can just say aye.
Yeah, or, yeah.
Aye.
All right.
Good evening. My name is Tim Kuhn, I'm a professional engineer with JR Russo and Associates here tonight representing the applicant Meadow Street Partners LLP, along with Ken Dunsus and Travis Board behind me. I have this board which I gave, you want some PDF, I don't know if I put it up on the screen or not.
Oh, sorry, is it, is it Ariel or the other one?
Um, this is... So we are here tonight requesting a text amendment to allow drive-through establishments as a permitted use in the Commercial Park Transition Zone, the CPT Zone. Behind me is a blow-up of the zoning map. You'll see the green color is the Commerce Park Transition Zone and the surrounding zones which you're probably familiar with. I'll get into those a little bit further, but you'll notice that the Commercial Park Transition Zone starts down here with these parcels off of Route 20 and then extends to the north up to the subsequent border along East Street. So that green is the Commercial Park Transition Zone. And however, we're not asking for these drive-through establishments in, on all those parcels. We understand that it may not be preferable up on the northern portion of this transition zone where right now it's mostly agricultural and residential, so we have limited our request so that it will allow the drive-throughs establishments only where the parcels have frontage on a state highway. And what that does is it essentially limits this request to four parcels which are highlighted in red here, that would apply, that this would apply to, okay, which are all on Route 20. This includes an 18 and a half acre parcel which was recently merged, this used to be three parcels, so this is a single parcel now on the north side of Route 20. The two existing parcels on the south side which are on both sides of Gateway Boulevard as well as the large 128 acre parcel that abuts these to the west. With the exception of this lot to the west of Gateway Boulevard, all of these are big undeveloped parcels. And one at the, to the west, northwest of Gateway Boulevard is the office building which was the former StubHub, as you recall.
We call it the New Gate.
The New Gate.
It goes way back.
Okay. So those are the four parcels. They're located in areas that are generally zoned for commercial and industrial as well. The Commerce Park, if you want, you can switch to the aerial photograph. This is just a blow-up, gives an idea of the area that this will impact. As I mentioned, the three of the parcels are currently vacant, undeveloped and surrounded really to, to the northwest by commercial properties, to the north by commercial, to the east by industrial and commercial properties. And really over here it's bordered by a wetland that runs across, children's book, it's kind of the buffer on the western side.
Did we zone change on this just last year or was it like 18 months ago?
I don't know that time.
The southeast piece?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
I think it was more than a year ago.
Year and a half, eight months?
Might have been two years.
When they did the zone change?
Just curious.
About a year ago.
Just curious.
So there are other drive-throughs. There's Dunkin' Donuts in the bank up in the center of town, a little further to the west, existing drive-through down to the east at the Phillips 66. Convenience store, as I mentioned, this is really a commercial area and we believe that this proposal for drive-through establishments in this area is consistent and appropriate and we would hope to vote in favor of the text amendment this evening. Happy to answer your questions.
So, yeah, sure. So when we did the, over the course of a couple of years, we changed our regulation to allow for a gas station. We did not allow for that particular property to have a drive-through, if I'm not mistaken. There was talk of it, we said no to that. We allowed the gas station to find its way over some of our objections. We then removed from the regulation the right to have a service station in the Commerce Park Transition or Commerce Park Zone altogether. I would think that maybe that was kind of hindsight saying bad move. Regardless, we didn't allow, you know, at that time, drive-through and it was something that the applicant was looking for. We do have drive-through and we have two, I guess we call them types? And from what I'm hearing from you, you're looking for a type, is it type A, B, or is it 1, 2?
It's A and B.
I thought it was. And from what you're saying, you're looking for type A and B?
Yes, we're looking for both.
Yeah, and just kind of the last time we were discussing with the applicant of the properties there, there was, it doesn't surprise me if we were looking for, is it type B? Which allows for a drive-through for banks, drugstores, other medical type of drive-throughs, if I've got this right. But you're looking for the possibility of both an A and a B, A or B, I should say.
A or B.
Do you have something in mind?
At this point, I don't believe there's any potential solid tenant, but in the process of marketing this, the ability to have drive-through establishments is certainly gonna...
The reason for it is just the ability to list it as a property that is approved?
Well, that's an approved use, it's more attractive, it's been undeveloped for quite some time, we're just looking to get some potential tenants in there and whatever we can do to make it sound better to them is what we're looking to do. And again, we do believe that this is, you know, being a commercial area, gonna have relatively little impact on the surrounding area.
So forgive me, this is my, this is my first meeting, so it might be a dumb question. So basically, this is just gonna open up that area to fast food chains, potentially?
It, it would.
Or a pharmacy.
Or a pharmacy, or banks.
But that's, that's the B that you're talking about, is pharmacies, but we're opening it up to A and B?
Type A would open it up to exactly what you're thinking.
Type A would open it up to fast food, coffee shops, would have a food associated to the drive-through.
Next section of road, what's at the eastern, where does that start? What is, where is that? That's, what is that?
This is the gas station, Commerce Park.
Oh, okay, that's the Commerce Park.
Commerce Park, this is the...
And then basically to like the, to the New Gate, which passes the New Gate.
What property did we talk about? I see the big one I know all about, that's not, that's part of the Commerce Transition Zone, but...
These two parcels are the ones on both sides of Gateway Boulevard.
Yep.
And then across the street, there used to be a house that was located here that is going to be taken down, and the fields that surround that house. That's all, 18 acres now, and that's it. That's all zone.
Properties that are affected by this?
So you, I'm sorry, you acquired from MPB property, the northwestern piece?
The east, the parcels are...
Right, yeah, no, the three on the north side of the street. The furthest parcel to the west was formerly MPB Ventures, owned it for eons, the little square rectangle in the back there for people that don't know is the Nicholson Cemetery. Okay. Piece going furthest to the east, at one point there was a baseball field there, some of you may not remember that application. And so that's the piece we're talking about, okay? Years and years ago, Commerce Park came to us looking for that. We've held steady for as long as I've been on the commission, you know, trying to limit drive-throughs. We had, we allowed it in business zone properties, which is how the Phillips 66 has come to have a drive-through. We allowed it in Village Center, which is how the Dunkin' Donuts came to, but we didn't allow it in the type A, okay, which would afford restaurants. If you look at the last two plans of conservation and development, you won't see anything in there that would suggest that we would think that it would be the appropriate use to have additional drive-throughs of the type A variety, but that's all I know at this point.
I believe it did those, what is it, list this, if this is business in conservation and development?
It would have been Commerce Park, 'cause in the first, I've been here too long, on the, on the first plan of conservation and development, which would be back enough 15 years, that had it just as being, we were introducing the Commerce Park Zone, taking what was formerly known as industrial zone and turning it into Commerce Park. Through that plan of conservation and development and the commission, Tom, you were on at that time, we came up with the concept of Commerce Park A and B. A being properties that had sewer and water, Commerce Park B being those properties which were formerly the industrial zone that didn't have...
Didn't have hookups.
Right, you know, so making that distinction there, the idea being that Commerce Park A would be, you know, along the Route 20 corridor and would be quote-unquote "the gateway to the community," yeah. Which was way before, way before that, they actually named that Gateway Boulevard. That's just, that's the history. The most recent plan of conservation and development, we created from that this idea of the Commerce Park Transitional Zone, taking the Commerce Park Zone, which is very large as everybody can see there, it continued over to the Green Area, and that's a wonderful, wonderful map, thank you. The Green Area was at the time of the plan of conservation and development, the last one was part of the Commerce Park A Zone. We created this transitional zone to try to add additional uses to the Commerce Park area, including retail, residential and other uses. And transitional, transitioning from this Commerce Park, you know...
Industrial plan.
Yeah, I was saying, yeah, transitioning that to the Village Center.
To the Village Center.
I just question if it's, if it's an allowable use in the Village Center, why would it not be an acceptable allowable use in the, in the transition zone between the two?
I don't think A is an allowable use anymore.
I don't think it is.
It was taken out, we only allow B for the banks and pharmacies.
So this would be to include A?
But in the transition.
Oh, oh, okay, right, yeah, right, for Village Center, right. Do I have any other questions? Well, with that, I guess we can open it up to the public.
Actually, I guess I do have just a couple more.
A lumbo.
Yeah, sorry. Never mind. I'll tell you later, you'll enjoy the story. You know, obviously, we don't, regulation, request for regulation change, we don't require any kind of, you know, concept plan, and you've been kind enough to tell us that, no, it's, you know, to make it more marketable and certainly, you know, I for one, I for one understand that for sure. And I guess if, if this were to happen, then I guess we'd get into traffic studies and whatnot when we got to special permitting. And if in fact the commission decided to open it up for type B, for drive-through, it would be by special permit and it would require...
So they're proposing an site plan approval? I think it's perfectly reasonable for you guys if you were to consider opening up to treat it as special permit, so you have maybe some more say over the design features, you know, especially when you're talking about possibly the drive-throughs, you know, having control over design is...
And it's, it's no secret to anyone in the room that that's, you know, it's a crazy high-traffic area.
Crazy section of road, so you gotta be wary.
I just have a question as well.
Sure.
I, I don't know if this is too early for an impact assessment to have been made, but has there been any consideration of any sort of impact assessment, like traffic, for example, that you guys are talking about?
It's early for that.
Austin, that's a good, that's a good question, I'm kind of suggesting it, but not saying it, but thank you for suggesting it.
Okay, yeah, yep.
I mean, I will add this, so as you guys know, we, you know, had our consultant, Goma in New York, do a Village Center study, and they did look at the transition zone, multifamily zone, and I think we all know that Route 20 is very auto-oriented, we have high-traffic counts, and so one of the recommendations for the transition zone was to look at opening up possibly to drive-through facilities such as restaurants. So that was one of the recommendations for this zoning district. I think the way that it's written, changing it from site plan approval, maybe specifically for the restaurant ones, I don't know that a bank drive-through or CVS drive-through has the kind of impact a fast-food drive-through has to a special permit, so that you guys have clearly a lot more say over the design and functionality of that would be appropriate and that it's limited to those on, those parcels that are on the state highway, definitely limits it to just particular properties within the transition zone.
Yeah, we would definitely want to take a look at that though, because a curb cut's coming off of 20, that can, that's a, that's a crazy stretch of road.
Yeah, I mean, the state is gonna be looking at that when they come in with a proposal. The traffic, the curb cuts, flow, all of that goes to the state, they're gonna need a permit from the state to do that. So that's all down the road, but I think if you guys were to consider a, you know, consider it, setting it up so that it gives you a lot of leadway in your review and request for information specifically for the restaurant, could be appropriate.
So what you're suggesting is opening it up for B, but then if they want to do an A, then they would have to come and get a special permit? Is that what you're saying in a nutshell, or...
Yes, what I'm saying is the text that you have in front of you under permitted use is F and G. F is the retail and personal service, type B drive-through, you could keep that under site plan approval, or you could switch it to special permit if you felt like there was gonna be a lot of impact associated with that. I am, restaurants, I would move to a special permit process so that it seems like, you know, that's something that you guys would want to have a little bit more say and considerations for, so you can move that over to a special permit process.
You'd also need to have some separation distance in your type A, as the size of the parcel. Here's my friend, it's the Peter L. Brown property to me, but the property on the north that you now own is fairly substantial, it's got some sizable frontage. Do you know what the frontage is?
I do not.
The combined frontage, Robin?
Maybe let me see if I can pick, look it up. Do you know if that has like an address associated with it?
I know that the owner has listed it.
An address, so the north parcel, 81?
73 Rainbow?
81.
Are you 87?
Now the northeast, across the street.
Oh, northeast.
It's actually northeastern.
Right now, I think it's 85. I think they all, when they merged it, they took the 85 address.
Because that was where the house was at.
Yeah, the house was 85, so it's another number.
I'm sure it's, no, but I'm sure that's what it would stay if they, if you merged.
Well, when they merged, it was a number.
Sorry, 87.
But maybe it's 81.
Hold on. It doesn't matter, she's looking at it.
81 would be to the west, so 81, 85, 87?
I think those were the three there.
It's not giving me the road frontage, why would that give me road frontage? Hold on, I'm gonna have to measure it out, it won't give me the number I need. So it's about 1,300 feet of road frontage, give or take?
Yeah, I was gonna guess 1,100.
You're close.
How much was it, was it?
About 1,300.
1,300.
So in this short stay that we had, just so the commission knows, the short stay that we had for drive-through in the Village Center, we had at the time Dunkin' Donuts was there. Dunkin' Donuts was a converted bank, it was a Connecticut National Bank, where some of us had our first accounts. Anyway, we allowed one at what we called the Ballast Property, Jimmy Ballast, which is at the corner, the triangle corner there, and we allowed one there and we took that as the separation distance for type A. So we had that, I can't recall, but it's, I think it was like as much as 1,500 feet that was the separation distance, because we didn't want to have, we opened up the Village Center for drive-through, we didn't want to have four or five drive-throughs in such a short rural area. So just throwing that out there, that that was the type of separation that we were using. I would have a hard time with more than, you know, one or two, because they're all within that same frontage, they're all within 1,500 feet of each other.
Good?
For now, yeah.
Anybody from the public want to speak in favor or opposed to this text amendment change?
Anyone want to speak?
Yeah, I'm Ken Dunsus from Enfield, 375 North Maple Street. I'm one and a half owners in a family business of the StubHub Building, which we bought exactly at the right time when COVID hit, and the five acres across the street, as well as the, I guess it's 18 acres with a new address with the three parcels. So we've, we've made quite an investment in East Granby, we think that that Route 20 drives a lot of traffic, it brings a lot of cars, this, as you know, East Granby's looking for development, people are driving right through town, so we thought and still think it's the path of progress. The Commerce Park Transitional is, I think, a fine idea to take something, we could still put industrial there, but fairly expensive and we don't do a lot of retail, we're more industrial, office, medical, would love that medical at two Gateway. But we see that parcel and those parcels being a good thing for the town and being well-designed under one ownership with nice character, not, not half-acre pads that all look different under different ownership, like perhaps Route 75, but I think with a good architectural flair, we could have different uses in there that have drive-through, that's a drive-through world. Everybody here's been to the drive-through probably in the last week, I mean, it's the way the world operates today. So we came to the town to say that Commerce Park Transitional had no path at all for drive-through, the way it was designed, so we're trying to solve that. And some people may not like fast food, but there are a lot of other retail and restaurants that have drive-through that you can't call fast food, there's Panera, there's Friendly's, there's, there's so many that now offer drive-through, because it's a drive-through world, that to say, we like this one, we like Starbucks, but we don't like McDonald's, you know, it starts to become a pick and choose, choose your winners kind of a situation, which really isn't fair to anyone. So I think everybody has to have an open mind about what drive-through means, it doesn't mean mayhem, it means you get a design that works with good stacking, people actually get off the road, less traffic there, it's a controlled area, we'll have one right in and right out on Route 20, can't get across that street as you know, so we'll have the intersection there to go in on the side by the office building, we'll have the right-in side by the office building, the right in and right out, so traffic's very well confined. And since we own all the parcels, we have to think of the, the big picture, and our big picture is to work that whole three, I guess, two parcels in concert, so that that area becomes a hub of commerce and brings, brings office, brings medical, brings banks, brings pharmacy, brings all these things. Everyone even fit on that one parcel. We have, you know, a better idea and a big plan to bring, bring commerce to East Granby. You know, it's pretty, pretty thin. In the long term, that Gateway Boulevard deserves to be a four-way intersection. The light would slow down people, and that's a long process, but that's the horizon, I think. And if that doesn't get done, that eighteen-acre parcel's going to sit there forever, because you're never going to get a curb cut with the state off Route 20 with an uncontrolled manner and coming in the back way, probably not going to serve that parcel very well either. So taking baby steps, we're, we don't have any leads at all. We're trying to get designs that work. We can't even put out a design until we answer this question. And once we do, we can start pitching various people, banks, Walgreens, various people who I think everyone in town would be happy to see there. But we need to know what we're offering and what we can offer there in terms of that drive-through. A lot of the uses that would be attracted that site, see that traffic count, see all those people going by and wanting to come buy a Starbucks coffee on the way to work. But we can't do that so far. So that's what we really see there, and you know, we're responsible developers. I've been doing it 35 years. We've got hundreds of tenants. Not a lot of retail, as I say, so we're dipping our toe, our toe in the water with that, but we have two million square feet of medical office and other, a lot in Connecticut, a lot of Massachusetts, and we're not going to develop something there that's going to be a detriment to the town in any circumstances. So I'll answer any questions if you have them.
You re- answered my questions. I was wondering if you had anybody that you were willing to discuss that was interested, but you have nothing.
Trying to get, you got to get that one leader to go. And we would, I'll tell you why I'd like to have Starbucks there. I know they're looking in Granby for another location. I think this is great. I think the traffic count, twenty thousand plus, that would say, hey, they like it, you know? The first guy drives the quality, drives the standard, drives what you're trying to do. They're more for the dollars than the, I want to get somebody high-quality to the, to the start. And the high-traffic is attractive to those people who have a drive-through business. But I see others. I see paint, I see AutoZone, I see others, you know, are sort of a, not a downtown commercial, but a sort of transitional commercial. You know, we can see them pulling up with their truck to deliver the paint for Sherwin-Williams. That's a kind of tenant that might go there. Somebody has a lot of traffic goes by, may need a truck to deliver, and that's why it's a good thing the transitional zone kind of marries those two. Do you have any ideas on the?
Like, shut through?
No, Gravy does not have a drive-through at theirs.
No.
Starbucks, the Starbucks in East Windsor that had a drive-through is now a burger joint, and the Starbucks in Windsor Locks on Route 75 that was a drive-through is now a B, a restaurant.
Okay.
That's the wrong side of that. Route five, Route 75, Route 20, auto count?
I don't know, but I know it doesn't look very good over there. I know we'd do a better job, but the Starbucks rep is looking in Granby for a new location with a drive-through.
Right, because they need a drive-through and Granby won't allow it.
Well, that's why McDonald's, I think, look great, too.
Well, the Starbucks, where the Starbucks is in Granby, they can't really put a drive-through there.
No, I know, Granby will not allow it. Granby's regulations still do not allow it.
CBS.
They had a Dunkin' that had a drive-through with that down as well.
They allow, yeah.
Yeah, over by, yeah.
I'm Lisa Mendy, thirty Crystal Drive. I am opposed to these two changes. This is not a low impact. This is a big impact. We already have incredible traffic on Route 20. I drive it every day. I see really large trucks who go through red lights every single day. You guys have got to get that traffic to slow down. And number two, I've heard a lot of talk over the years about not becoming Route 75, and this is becoming Route 75. I mean, it's like, you, you have the Cumberland Farms, and that has twenty, it opens twenty-four hours, and it has food, and people go in there. Like, you don't need a drive-through. Like, I'm, I'm just against turning our rural nature of a town into Route 75. We're trying to get a farmer's market established, having a hard time. You know, it's, I've been saying for months, who are we as a town? So I would like to keep the rural nature of a town. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Someone online wants to speak.
Go for it.
Steven.
Hi there. Steven, was your seventeen Centec a drive? Just like to agree with the, the sentiments of the last speaker there, and kind of, I'd be on the side to oppose the amendment, kind of in fear of what we'd be taking away from the Village Center businesses, really. You've got businesses there that, you know, do not have the capability of a drive-through, and I feel like that could hollow them out. And, you know, I also do think, yeah, it's, it's a slippery slope here, and I would hate to see a Route 75 scenario. It's, um, this could be a slippery slope, and I think at minimum, the commission should, you know, take some steps here to, to control, you know, what is, what businesses or what industry is, is able to, or is selected to be in, in the parcel. Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name's Keith Claffey, six Washington Ridge Road. And I have some notes here. I'm, I had my eyes dilated today, so I can barely see what the. You know, we, I do want to see development and commerce brought to East Granby, but I'm not sure that I want fast food, and I don't think I'd call it a restaurant, for a lot of concerns. I don't want East Granby to become a drive-through world. I think we've already seen that. We've had enough of that. This is 2023, not 1970. Everyone knows that there's McDonald's four miles from here, and you can pass Popeyes and Wendy's and, and Burger King or whatever, and, and the, the ones Starbucks that are now closed, you can pass those, too, and be back here in just a few minutes. Definitely concerned about the traffic impact. That road is, is dangerous as it is, so improvements there for sure. But regarding the proposal, you know, to put drive-through businesses along that road, I think we need to consider several critical disadvantages, like the potential for increased traffic congestion that could significantly impact local commutes and road safety. There's also risk to small local businesses, as was mentioned, the restaurants and things, other businesses that are already in town, which might struggle to compete. Introducing drive-throughs may not align with our town's historical and agricultural character, potentially affecting the aesthetic and cultural identity. And moreover, environmental concerns like pollution, litter, things that bring, you know, we all know fast food restaurants bring. And, and lastly, you know, I'm a nurse practitioner. I see the effect of, the health effects. So, you know, the proliferation of fast food options having adverse implications in, in public health. Not, not good options. So another reason why I don't want to see this become a fast, a drive-through world. I would recommend that, that we definitely do public consultation, environmental and traffic impact studies beforehand, so we can, you know, make that decision ahead of time, and, and consider regulatory measures like design guidelines or a cap on the number of drive-throughs if, if you guys are going to, you know, decide to go that way, to make sure that this aligns with the long-term vision of East Granby and the well-being of the community.
Anyone else?
Can I go, yeah? Instead of Route 75, has anyone been to Long Metal Shops? CBS has a drive-through there. Those beautiful shops can be done, can be done differently than what's been done by others in the area. We, we own all of those parcels, the office building, we're under one ownership. We're going to have a consistent architecture. We're going to have a decent plant. We're not going to just let whoever wants to be there be there. You know, we have a concern as well, so. And I think a, a limit between drive-throughs is, is very arbitrary, and I don't think that makes any sense and has any, any place in, in zoning. I mean, it's still sort of a free country, but.
Well, it is, but if you put them on the same side of Route 20, and you put them within, say, four or five hundred feet of each other, you're going to have the same problem that they have down in Trumbull, Connecticut, on White Plains Road, which is the main road. It's a state highway, runs through the middle of the community, where the Starbucks backs up cars about a quarter mile on certain days in the center of a rather large town, and it's insanity.
Does that have a?
Insanity.
That's based on distance from another drive-through?
Just based on putting, putting a drive-through on a state highway in the middle of your community.
Well, there's five acres.
On a road, on a road that has incredible traffic count in the morning. That's, that's what that is, and that's what we have there. And not only is it a significant traffic count in the morning and the afternoon, as everyone knows, but a lot of the other potential things that have come before the commission in the last couple of years would suggest that there's even more, which is a concern that I believe Ms. Mendez had, a concern that Mr. Claffey, I think, had, so. So to sit there and, to sit there and to say that that a separation distance is arbitrary, I mean, sure, if you think it is, but if you look at it in terms of, from a safety perspective, it makes a lot of sense. And I don't know, you know, what competing drive-through establishments would want to be that close to each other on that road. It just doesn't make sense. When I'm going on Route 75 and I get a little hunger, sometimes I turn into the Taco Bell, and sometimes I don't, because there's just too much traffic, you know? And sometimes I just say I can wait till, you know, whatever.
Would type B, as opposed to A and B, be advantageous?
Yeah, you'd, you could have the same problems. Have you ever gone to CVS and had twelve cars in front of you? I have. I mean, it's a good site design. It's five-acre this day. We have engineers who do this.
But, but a drugstore establishment, I think you referenced Walgreens before. A Walgreens may or may not fit that five-acre parcel. It probably does, but might be a bit of a squeeze. But the difference between putting a, a drugstore with a drive-through, someone said it earlier, there's, there's less.
Starbucks.
There's less car count going through that drive-through, but also the site would require for you to have a building for your Walgreens, if that was in fact the chain that you were able to, to lease to. They would require a fairly decent-sized building, which would require a larger site, which would require enough of an area of pavement to get the cars off of, and in fact, you know, I hope it wouldn't be as tight as the Granby drive-through, CVS, but, but it works better than a leasing to a chain, restaurant chain, I won't call it fast food, I'll call it restaurant, which doesn't need to be on a five or a six-acre site. They wouldn't be looking to lease the entire eighteen-acre site or the entire six-acre site that's, that's available. They'd be looking for a smaller site, which would back up cars potentially onto 20. That's just kind of the way I look at it.
Yeah, well, you can accomplish that by having a bigger building of other tenants who don't have drive-through and a drive-through there, and they can go a long way in stacking. These guys are engineers. They know how to do that. I know there's another meeting. I don't want to take too long, but I don't think East Granby could ever, well, maybe we'll never get out of that eighteen-acre parcel. Maybe we're stupid to buy it, but that's going to be like that forever, if, if you think that's the answer there. I, I'm concerned it does not have access. It's going to require a light. You can't get a light approved. There's enough traffic. You need this side in order to get that side, so it's kind of a catch-22 to get that whole thing started. And the way to get, get it started is with quality retail, and I think some of the best uses, Walgreens and such, will, will work well on there. Sorry to take so much time.
No.
Anyone else?
Hello, my name's Paul Tlin. I live on Sunrise Terrace. I'm also chairman of the Economic Development Commission. Listening to a presentation here, it strikes me that this, this group is exactly the same, the type of partner we are looking for in town. I mean, you talked about a contiguous design on either side of the street, and it's, it's very exciting to hear that. And in fact, this is very much a struggle for me personally. You know, it's, I'm anxious to see the development happen, but much like I've heard others say, fast food is, is not something that I would look forward to seeing on Route 20. I guess my feeling is going forward with the, with the type B for the retail. I think that makes good, pretty good sense. You know, we're, we're looking for, you know, a pharmacy, those sorts of things in town, and, and I think that type, traffic is, is much less on, on that type of property. So my thinking would be to go forward with the B, but, but probably not the A for a lot of the reasons we've worked here. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Tom, before you go further. Gentlemen. Would you, would you be interested in the possibility of us moving forward with a revision to your application? Revising to F to read retail, personal service establishments, par-ends, including drive-through establishments, type B on parcels with frontage on a state highway, N, par-ends, by special permit period, deletion of two G. Two H would then become two G. Two I would become two H, and two J would become. I'm reading my mind. Two I.
Two G was type A?
Two G is the type A. Yep.
If I can interject for a moment. We allow restaurants, so you would not be getting rid of restaurants.
Well, it's not restaurants.
Just the drive-through. Okay.
The drive-throughs.
Just so we're clear. Don't, don't, don't change.
Eliminating, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So G stays.
G stays.
G stays.
H is H, I is I.
Okay.
And J stays J.
But G removes the type A.
The type A drive-through. Correct.
Yes. Just removing, just removing the language as to type A restaurant.
Consider the special permit process you talked about earlier.
Yeah, A with special permit. That way, every single one, you get to see before it's approved.
And then you get traffic studies, and then you get demonstrations of adequate stacking for safety issues.
Yeah, I would suggest that just as to F, by special permit, for type B.
Right, you said that.
And then.
Extending the par-ends.
And then removing, including drive-through establishments, type A.
Right.
So you wouldn't include, you wouldn't consider leaving type A in there on your special permit?
Right, right. Just omitting the type A. I'd say it's a start. You certainly don't have to do that. You certainly, you know.
Look like Stray can't take away retail?
Yeah.
Just the drive-through option.
Okay.
Not taken away the use.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, we also have the option to extend this to next month, if you guys want to think about it and, you know, see if you come up with something creative. We can extend the open hearing, or the public hearing, till next month.
I appreciate your.
Okay. All right, so we'll continue the open hearing.
That sounds good to me.
Or the?
February 13. Okay.
So we're not going to close this one.
Right.
We're just gonna.
We have to March, I think, right?
March is our next meeting?
No, and we have to go decide on it. March 14.
Oh, yeah, so we have. Oh, yeah, so we have next month. Yeah.
And we could have another meeting in February.
And we could have, if we needed to, we could have another meeting in February.
Yes, February 13 is our next meeting.
Okay. All right. So we will continue. We're going to leave the public hearing, leave this, um, open. Okay. That brings us to application 2315, Jonesers Express Transportation Special Permit for 40,000 square-foot warehouse distribution facility in the outdoor trailer park on Russell Road. We need the legal notice, which reads, Town Beach Granby Planning and Zoning Commission will hold hold hearings on Tuesday, January 9, 2024, 7:00 p.m., East Granby Town Hall, January 9, Center Street, via Zoom concerning the following. This one is application 2315 by Jonesers Express Transportation for a special permit for 40,000 square-foot warehouse distribution facility and outdoor trailer parking on Russell Road. It's map 12, lots 50, 51, and 50-1 and 50-2. Can I please get a motion to open the public hearing?
Give a motion again for the permanent application 2315. Second.
Any discussion on that, that we would need to amend? All those in favor?
I have it.
Zoom guy?
Austin.
Austin.
You got it, I.
Okay.
I'm lagging, I'm sorry.
That's okay. It's the internet. It's raining out.
For sure, for sure.
Guys want to, where are you? Come on up.
Come on up.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dave Ziyex. I'm a professional engineer and principal with FA Hesketh Associates. We're located right across the street, and with me this evening is Todd Jones from Jonesers Express Transportation. Will be happy to answer any questions you might have about his proposed operation. He will be the owner and operator of the facility. What we're looking at is, maybe Laura, you could put up that first AP slide. I brought along backups, just in case our PDF stuff blows up on us.
I've got a big map here, too.
But, yeah, we're looking at what is lots 50, 50-1, and 50-2, which is on the southeast corner of Russell Road and East Street. It's the site where Mark had his auto shows for many years, and then Mark's auto is located directly to the east of this site. They own this property. It's actually two parcels they're going to be selling, which total 12.44 acres. It is in the CPT's, the transition zone. I believe you folks rezoned this a number of years ago to the CPT zone, under a, I guess, a town initiative. The proposal is for a 40,000-square-foot, one-story building, which would contain 37,072 square feet of warehouse on the first floor and a 2,928-square-foot office building for their staff. And then we have room up in the mezzanine on the second, sort of a second floor, located over the other office, for another 2,900 square feet, if they need that additional office space for staff as they grow. We will be keeping the 3,100-square-foot maintenance garage, which is the little box just off to the east, as for many years serviced as a maintenance garage. We're going to buy that as well and use that as a maintenance for the trucks that will be using this facility. It's been a truck maintenance facility, auto maintenance facility, for many, many years, and we continue to do that. The building height would be just around 24 feet. It's basically a one-story industrial building at 24 feet square, 24 feet high. There is a single-family home on Russell Road, it's sort of in the middle underneath there, that will be torn down, and, you know, that, of course, that lot will be blended in with the other much larger lot to create the 12.44 acres. We were here, if you recall, back several months ago, for a quick and formal to show the commission we had in mind at the time. We took a number of notes from that meeting, suggestions, recommendations from commission members, and one was basically to push the building and all of the truck activity as far over to the east on the property as possible. You didn't want to see any drives on East Street itself. We wanted to create berms and landscaping along Russell Road, East Street, and then to the, there's actually one residential, a butter to us, which is in that notch on the property on the west side there along East Street, and minimize sight lighting and the like, to try to minimize the impact from this. I think we did a good job in listening to what you said and incorporating that into the design that's here. You can go to the next slide. This is the layout plan that you all have in your package, and basically, as you'll see when it comes up, we have two drives proposed on Russell Road, no drives on East Street. The drive, sort of in the center of the property, that's sort of our employees' visitor entrance exit. The parking for employees and for visitors, customers, is on the west side of the building, and then all the truck activity is, the loading and the like, is on the east side of the building facing Mark's. There will be a driveway there as well that will be for the trucks. The trucks won't be able to come in in that center driveway there. The easterly driveway is designed for the trucks. On that east side of the building, we'll have 15 loading docks. They'll be depressed four feet along that in a traditional fashion. And then, on the very east end, we have 19 open truck parking spaces, so the cabs of the trucks will park there, and there'll be charging stations, and as that technology evolves, and there'll also be electrical plugs there so that you can keep the trucks, the fuel in the trucks, warm overnight, and the trucks will park there during the cold months. On the very west side, which is the shaded east-west portion of the site, we have 65 trailer parking spaces there. So basically, those are box, the box trailers, they'll park there either overnight or for a period of time. As part of the business here that Todd has, he handles box trucks for, pretty much, sort of, if you want to call it regional, other truck haulers, distribution centers, things of that nature, and he transports those trucks. Sometimes they're full of merchandise, sometimes they're empty, but that's part of his business in transporting those back and forth. The access to the maintenance garage will be on this site. You can see it's sort of in the middle there on the east side, there's a shaded connection point there. So there'll be no driveway from the maintenance building out onto Russell Road. They have to come through our site.
I'm sorry, I'm just...
You see the smaller part?
Yeah, okay. So, I'm sorry, to access the repair garage area?
Yeah. It will not have its own access to Russell Road.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
And you can see the outline on this plan and others, we have three large stormwater basins to handle the stormwater on the property. That was very heavily scrutinized by your wetlands commission and by staff, and I think it's a good design. It will also, it will attenuate the peak storms, but it will also provide some really good water quality cleansing of any runoff that comes from the site. The site will have onsite water system, well system, and a septic system. There will be a 200,000-gallon fire tank installed, which is on the west side of the building. We tucked it into the slope there, so it's sort of out of sight, out of mind. We are working with the mechanical and fire protection people to try to reduce the size of that tank. I personally still think it's too big, but I'm a civil engineer, I'm not a mechanical engineer, but having built many of these buildings, it seems out of scale. We have it on the plan as 200,000 gallons, but our hope is to make it a little smaller as we move forward. Could you put up the next slide? We've developed extensive landscape plans, as noted in your town staff report. We heard that you wanted to see a nice landscaping plan. One of the first things we have is the rail fencing, the nice white rail fencing that's along the perimeter of East and Russell, that's going to remain, so that look will remain the same. Then along both of the main streets, we have new rows of street trees that we'll be planting. Right now, I think there's one major tree near the house that we'll retain, but we're adding some additional street trees. And then we have extensive berms proposed along Russell, along East, and along that corner there with our butter, that we're, one thing we're going to generate here is a lot of farm soil, topsoil, so we have plenty of soil to build berms with. So we'll be building berms and planting those.
You know, the elevation of the property that you want to develop versus the residential of butter, as well as from, like, harvested crystal?
Yeah, I've got a slide for that.
That's going to show on GR1. But while I'm talking about the berm and mentioned on Russell, it looks like on Russell and on East, it looks like you're going to be somewhere near 12 feet.
Yeah, it's going to be pretty good size.
On the elevation. And then, as we go a little further down, it's going to be a little less, but the berm here, 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 if you look at, just jumping the gun.
Yeah, let's make it.
GR1, it's going to give you those elevations, and you're going to see that it's 12 feet.
And then over in the southwest corner of the site, where that sort of triangle is created, that's a wetland area, but it's only seasonally wetland. I mean, I've been at auto activities there where people park there and everything, so, but it's now wetlands that will be preserved. It's going to be in a conservation area. That will be able to return back to its natural meadow, and eventually, trees will start to develop and grow in that area. We have no plans in that area. It's going to be put into a conservation area as part of the wetlands permit income. Sheet number LS2 has a list of all the plantings we have proposed, and then the interesting one, and similar to what the gentleman was talking about, LS3 we provided. We did a series, two cross-sections, one's A and one's B, and one goes from, if you're on West Street and you're looking east, or if you're on East Street looking east, that's the top one. You can see on the left-hand side, they're up at the top, that's the A. You're looking at the berm with the additional evergreen trees and street trees planted there, and you can see where all the row of trucks would be, the trailers. They're down, they're actually in the northwest corner of that truck parking area. That's actually cut into the slope six or seven feet, from what you see out there now. So you can see a gently sloping parcel from the corner of East and Russell down to Mark's facility. We're digging that truck parking area in about seven feet. So you can see the top of the trucks are garrows up to the top of the berm, the landscape and the addition.
I'm sorry, what's the typical height of the trailers?
Well, they're generally 13 feet, because it's 13.7 or so is the bridge, so. Every once in a while, one of them doesn't pay attention.
They're close.
It's about 13 feet, 13.2. And what I have is the next, the other one is B, and B is basically standing in the second floor of the home that butts us, and looking sort of to the northeast. And Laura, go to that next slide. I've blown up that bottom cross-section, which is really the one of the analysis, because the one from East Street, you're really not going to be able to see much. Yeah, so here's a blow-up of the one. So the double-decker box on the left-hand side, the cake on the left-hand side, is the height of the home, and then you're standing in a window, maybe in the second floor, and you're looking out sort of to the northeast. And you can see there's the distance over to the property line is right there in the center. There's some trees that, mature trees along that property line, and then you have the berm, and then you have the vegetation that we planted on the berm, and then you can see a glimpse of the first few trucks, you know, at that location at your eye level. That's a considerable distance away from where you're standing in the home.
And that's your evergreen B and B tree plant?
Yeah. We really loaded that berm up with a lot of evergreens starting out.
And that's, that distance is 1 inches 30 feet?
Yeah, you can see where the 250 line is. It's sort of, it's shown on the LA plan, the 250 special review area. Hey, Laura, I hate to do it, but jump back to the very first slide. I think we can see the, you can see it on the... LA one? Yeah, no, go back to the, actually, the aerial. I could walk over to this and show you. Basically, this dashed line that's on all the plans, that's 250 feet from this notch of the property lines. The house itself is about 75 to 100 feet further away. The house is right here, and the barns are right here, and then we have this notch in the property line, and we're counting to 250 foot special review area from the notch. So when you're standing in this house and you're looking up, you're seeing these first, potentially seeing the first batch of these trucks right here. But you got to get through the berm, and you got to get through the vegetation to do that. Continuing beyond the sight lighting, we're going to be using...
Can I get back to the profile, though?
Yeah, sure. Jump ahead about five slides, Laura.
I was questioning the underground tank, the water tank.
Oh, yeah.
How high is that going to be above?
That, those tanks are about 20, 25 feet tall, by 30 feet in diameter or so. Yeah, you're not going to see that.
Which higher warehouses have something like that.
Yeah, you're just not going to see it from there, because it's tucked in. I put it over here in the slope, right over here. So there's really, I don't think anybody's going to be able to see that.
The pantry is 32 feet high.
Does it say 32?
What's 32?
30 by 30, maybe?
The gallon is 33 feet in diameter and 32 foot high.
Okay, so 32 feet.
Okay.
But I'm keeping my fingers crossed that that's going to be like 20 feet.
Sort of, yeah.
That's where I had the 20 feet.
A 40,000 square-foot build would sound a lot.
It seems like a lot of work.
It's not a wooden building either.
No, no. It's going to be poorly sprinkled, and I, I don't know. I'll keep the fight going.
So you're going to go do lighting right now, right?
Yeah, looking at the lighting, we provided a photometric plan. The idea was to keep the lighting really low, just enough for security, so for the most part, except for like a couple of hotspots on the picture itself, you know, that stuff. But as a general, we're looking at, you know, a foot and a half of wood foot candles on the whole property, pretty minimal. And again, that's just for security purposes. It has no other real function.
What are the hours of operation?
Todd, what were you thinking the hours of operation? I'm sorry.
Six to 10, 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM.
Six to 10.
Is that five, or seven, or six days a week?
Days, five.
Five. Sorry, seven to 10?
Six to 10.
So the lighting would be maximum height, I think staff pointed out there's a typo, maybe at 25 feet, but it's really meant to be 24 feet, and we'd have to correct that. Analysis was run. I checked today, and the analysis was run for 24 feet. And we have essentially zero foot candles at all the property lines. There is a little trespass over onto Russell Road of tens of candle, foot candle, and we'll have to correct that with adjusting the locations of the light standards a little bit, so it's zero on Russell Road as well. But our intent is to be zero on all the properties. And again, it's nice little LED fixtures with shielding on there. The shielding's already incorporated into design to, that's how you get the cutoffs you need. you need. So that's the intent is the lighting is purely for security purposes. It has no, you know, like car dealership purpose or something like that. There's no particular reason to make it any brighter than that. Talked a little bit about already about the berming. We've added that extra screening, the heavy landscaping there. There's really no standards, I think, in the regulations, but I think staff agrees that, you know, we've done a good job in providing a really thorough landscaping plan with the project. At this point, I saw Scott Hesketh, my partner and the head of traffic is here. We'll make a brief traffic presentation. We've provided a full traffic study for you folks to have an opportunity to read.
Yeah, because I'd like to know a little about how you would mitigate the truck traffic going to East Street.
I'd like to talk about that in general, and Scott can give you some numbers. I talked about that with Todd. Basically, for his employees, because a lot of the truck traffic is his employees, they go and they pick things up at the airport, they take them someplace else. That's a big part of their business. They may bring them here or others may...
They bring it there and store it in the warehouse for a while?
Yeah, and then move it from one truck to the other inside, things that need to be put inside that can't sit outside. That's kind of his business. So the American Airlines needs to go pick something up at the airport and drive it to, I didn't realize this, but a lot of the stuff that's at Bradley that's large has to go to like JFK because we don't get the supersized cargo planes here.
Okay.
So if something gets shipped in by truck and it needs to go by air, part of Todd's business is to go pick that stuff up and drive it to Boston or drive it to JFK to have it put on the larger planes. That's a big part of his business. So it's a lot of localized business. It's really, a lot of it's oriented towards the airport, but it's also all the other businesses around us now, the Dollar Generals, the Walgreens, everything. They all have miscellaneous tasks that need to be done, and Jonesers Express will come do it for you. You know, they have a lot of those customers. And they'll also store some of their boxes on site and things of that.
If I might, so the majority of your runs are up perimeter road?
No, our main focus, we do air freight. So air freight, we have to be at the airport.
Yeah, no, I know where the, yeah.
We're picking up and dropping off every day at the airport. And that's why this particular site is perfect for our operation because we honestly, we wouldn't be able to, if we were five miles away from the airport, we would be out of business. We wouldn't be able to do it. The airport is such a pivotal...
I get you. I'm just trying to, I'm trying to visualize, you know...
How do you get to the airport from that location?
I'm trying to see your business. I'm just trying to picture it.
How do you get to the airport?
How do we get to the, well, I can tell you, down Russell Road, you have perimeter, and we actually pick up every day where the FedEx is, right across from Coparts. We're there several times a day.
Right.
Also, we pick up on 75 as well.
Right.
That side of the airport, because there's facilities over there that are offside there that still are associated with.
So typically, when you're going out in your place with a truck, you're going to the right?
Yes. And so perimeter road is going to be very pivotal for us to go north. We do business with SEVA too, which is there on Bradley Park Road.
Right.
So that's another place that we would need to go.
Yeah. Do you ever have a reason to go, you know, out to East Street?
Not really.
Seeing as you can access 20.
Not to add, well, not to add to anything but, you know, our trucks, we do have trucks that come in.
Right.
So that would be the only concern I have for the residents here is that Google, trying to get Google to chase something, it's a act of God.
It's really hard to chase that.
Yeah, the fastest way is what everybody's going to look for. They're going to walk 20 and take a ride on East Street.
I get that.
But we can mitigate that with our own trucks.
Right.
And that's...
I got that with Hunt and Morgan too.
I'm sorry, he's speaking.
Yeah, just let him speak, please.
No, I was just...
You'll have plenty of time.
So I could say that our fleet will take a right, our service is to the right because it's at the airport, it's not East Street.
Would you say the percentage of truck transportation is your own trucks versus somebody coming into you with a truck?
Percentage wise, I mean, we probably get 10 trucks a day, 15 trucks a day.
That are not yours?
That are not mine, yes. So basically, now it would be 10 to 20.
Is that the same, the same people regularly or it's randomly anybody that's coming in?
No, it's, well, we do get over the road. So what that is, is people coming in from other parts of the country to drop off stuff for, you know, distributions and stuff like that. We have local, you know, your Estes Express Lines, maybe a pile, R and L, they come in and pick up stuff that our clients had us pick up that might not be flying out.
Right. All right. I'm just, I mean, you see where I'm getting at with this, right?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
I'm just trying to establish if there's any way that, you know, even if there's communications between you and whoever's coming in, to let them know which way they should be coming in.
Well, I can just tell you now that where we're at now, we are surrounded by at least probably 800 homes. So, you know, I mean...
Where is that?
We're on North Street in Windsor Locks.
Where?
North Street in Windsor Locks. So, you know, they built a big development of very nice, you know, mansions back in, I don't know, 2011. And we cohabitate very well. And, you know, there's, you know, we're talking, you know, in this neighborhood, Russell Road, East Street, we're talking about 50 houses max with two side streets that, you know, on the left heading out to 20. But we're in, you know, like I said, we're in a lot of, we're just right into residential neighborhood. I mean, we shouldn't, we shouldn't be there, but we were grandfathered in because it was built and that was what the intention, intentional use was, but it changed over time to residential. A problem that we have now is that trucks are directed to take 159. Now, that turn at that stop sign is brutal. We tell everyone when they call for directions to take 75 and take a ride on North Street because that's the most direct access. So we have neighbors now, a lot more neighbors. We've been at our current location for 10 years.
Why are you moving?
Space and no one wants to pay rent forever.
So what we can do is just to talk about things in general with Scott, what we thought was that we know that, you know, it's Todd's intent to, certainly with his trucks, is to make as many right-hand turns as possible down Russell and work your way over to the airport and 75 in that direction. But to be super conservative, we oriented some of the more traffic over towards East Street, so you could see what the numbers are, you know, and what the levels of service are and everything with a super conservative analysis versus the reality, you know. But it gives you a good idea of where you are with levels of service, particularly down at the traffic light, you know, down on 20. And then what's interesting is the intersection with Russell and East, I didn't even recognize it one day, almost went through it. It's been stop signed in all three directions, so...
Yes, I didn't notice.
That showed up one day.
Yeah, yeah.
I was actually caught off guard a little by myself.
Yeah, I almost went through that last week, two weeks ago.
Because it just showed up one day. But that's a full, you know, signaled by stop sign intersection.
Right, it's three-way, yeah, it's a three-way stop sign.
So now it deserves some analysis now because you're going to be stopping there facing potential extra traffic. So Scott, why don't you come on in and introduce yourself and then we'll get back and talk about the staff comments and that.
For the record, Scott Hesketh, licensed engineer in Santa Connecticut, firm FA Hesketh and Associates, and the author of the Traffic Impact Report dated December 29th, 2023, which has been submitted for this application. And we were asked to take a look at the traffic impacts or potential traffic impacts of this proposed development on the local roadway network. In order to do that, we obtained some background traffic volume data from a number of different sources. Traffic volume counts on East Street conducted by Condot during October 2022. East Street has an average daily traffic volume of about 3,700 vehicles, morning peak hour of 327 vehicles, afternoon peak hour of 408 vehicles, and that's on East Street just north of Nicholson. To supplement that and to update the counts, our office installed an automated traffic volume counter for a full seven-day period during June of 2023 on East Street, just south of Russell Road. At that location, we observed 3,680 vehicles on average on a daily basis, which is comparable to the DOT counts, with a morning peak hour of 293 and afternoon peak hour of 366. And peak hour volumes at that location were slightly less than just north of Nicholson. In addition, Condot had traffic volume counts on Russell Road, which they conducted back in 2010.
I'm sorry, what was the total for a day?
3,680 vehicles.
And yet the peak was 300 per hour?
Yes, 300 during the morning and 366 during the afternoon.
So there's literally no time in a 24-hour cycle that there's less than, say, 100 cars?
During the evenings, yes.
Not if you live on East Street. That's a question.
After 8:00 PM. I pulled the same traffic information after 8:00 PM.
Does it? Does it get to 50?
It does.
Well, let's see, if I look at Monday, June 29th...
I would have thought at 3,600 that the peak would be higher and I thought that it would be...
It's 3,600 for 24 hours, not 10.
No, I get that.
Okay, I'm with you.
I'm good at math too.
No?
And I just thought that maybe it would be, the peak would be higher based on 3,600, that the peak would be six to nine o'clock and then it, you know, and then it would be reverse four to seven o'clock and that the peak would be higher and then to come up with 3,600.
The average is I'm looking at 136 at seven o'clock, I'm looking at 99 at eight o'clock, I'm looking at 62 at nine o'clock, I'm looking at 62 at 10 o'clock, we're looking at 24 at 11:00 PM, 27 at midnight.
I'm sorry, so what was the magic 300 hour was?
What hour was that?
The peak, the peak 300 was at what time? And that was a day?
Well, the morning peak hour is typically 7:00 AM and the afternoon peak hour is three, four, or five, depending on the particular day.
What hour did you get 300?
You're using averages, so...
I would have to look.
I'm looking at, so I pulled the data myself online before the meeting. So this is October 4th of, this was quite some time ago, I don't know why I didn't read it, but the peak for this date was...
2020, right?
Yes, was 7:00 AM, was 4:06, it's not 2020.
Thank you.
Was 406 at 7:00 AM. That was the peak for the morning.
Yep, okay.
And then the peak that afternoon would have been at 4:00 PM at 398.
Yeah, so that's your commute.
Yeah, it's your commuting time.
Thanks, yep.
Yep.
Welcome to Connecticut.
Okay, and then Russell Road, again, back in 2010, average daily traffic volume of 650, with peak hours of 39 and 70 during the morning and the afternoon, so much less. In addition, our office conducted manual turning movement counts during June of 2023 at the intersection of East Street and Russell Road. We also had access to manual turning movement counts conducted by our office during October of 22, of 2022 at the intersection of Route 20 and East Street. We took all of those counts, we balanced them between the locations based on recent Condot growth rates. We used a 1% per year growth rate on all the roadways except for Russell Road, which represented a 2% growth rate. We grew the traffic volumes to a 2025 design year. And we included traffic volumes from the Cumberland Farms and from the Bramble Bush Residential Development, which has been approved but not yet constructed.
You read my mind.
Yep, just to make sure that all the traffic was included. And the background traffic volumes are presented in figure four in the report. In terms of site-generated traffic, we looked at the ITE trip generation report, which is standard engineering reference, allows us to estimate traffic volumes at proposed facilities based on actual counts at existing operating facilities throughout the country. The proposed development here is a warehouse development, which is land use code 150. It's 40,000 square feet of floor area. Based on the ITE projections, we're projecting about 101 trips on a daily basis, 28 trips during the morning peak and 31 trips during the afternoon peak. We distributed that traffic to the roadway network. We projected about 80% of the site traffic to the west toward Russell Road, 20% to the east on Russell Road. And when the traffic gets to East Street, we're looking at 10% north on East Street, perhaps 20% west on Route 20, and the remaining 50% would go east on Route 20 toward Interstate 91. And that's all traffic, not just truck traffic, but all traffic. Capacity analysis calculations were conducted for the intersection of Route 20 and East Street and the retail driveway at that location for East Street and Russell Road and Russell Road at the proposed site driveway. Calculations were done for both the background and combined traffic volume conditions, and the results of that analysis presented in table four. The analysis indicates that the signalized intersection of Route 20 and East Street operates in the background conditions at a level of service C with average delays of about 23 seconds or 28 seconds per vehicle, depending on the peak hour. With the introduction of the site-generated traffic, we will maintain a level of service C with increased delays of less than one-half a second per vehicle on average at that location. The intersection of East Street and Russell Road, as we just heard, is now a always-stop sign controlled intersection. All approaches at that location operate at a level of service A, meaning average delays of less than 10 seconds per vehicle during both the morning and afternoon peak hours under both the background and combined traffic volume conditions. So virtually no impact on the operations at that location. And the intersection of Russell Road and our site driveway, we project, assuming a single site driveway for analysis purposes, that all approaches would operate at a level of service A at that location as well. In addition, our office took a look at the available intersection site distances at the proposed site driveway locations. There are two proposed site driveway, a westerly driveway and a easterly driveway, one of them is for commercial traffic, one for passenger vehicles. The intersection site distances at those locations meet the Condot requirements for approach speed of 35 miles per hour for all conditions. Russell Road is posted at 35 miles per hour. And with the always-stop sign controlled intersection up at the intersection, it's difficult to believe that traffic volumes will be, traffic vehicles will be going faster than 35 miles an hour at those locations. Anyone traveling in eastbound direction has to do so beginning at a full stop from the intersection. Anyone traveling in the westbound direction has to stop at the intersection, so 85 percentile speeds usually are under 35 miles per hour. Because the proposed development does not have frontage to any state highway, we will not need any Department of Transportation approvals, so the rules we're looking for would be from this commission solely. If the commission has any specific questions regarding traffic, I'll be happy to try and...
I just go back to you, and you said it, I just didn't write it down, the peak on Russell Road traffic, I think it was like 60 and something.
The peak on Russell Road, yeah, again, this is 2010 count, DOT, but it's 39 in the morning and 7 in the afternoon. And if you look at the traffic volume counts, which we had done at the intersection, we've got 100 and, maybe 100, less than 110 in the morning, about 110 to 115.
Russell.
Based Russell Road, based on our turning movement counts at the intersection.
As a traffic engineer, would you recommend that the commission consider requesting that the applicant take right only up on Russell Road and use that, certainly at least during peak hours of the morning and peak hours of the afternoon?
I don't believe it's a capacity constraint. I believe it's an operational situation, and I think the applicant has indicated that he's more than willing to direct at least his vehicles, east and west, to the east toward the airport. He can certainly recommend to all drivers that they use Russell Road to the east. And I think from a good neighborly standpoint, I think he's committed to doing that. And I think from a good neighborhood standpoint, I think he's committed to doing that.
Versus considering making the egress such that a truck couldn't possibly go
To the right, not to the left.
westerly onto Russell, but rather would be forced to go eastwardly.
Yeah.
But that becomes a problem with incoming, the handful of incoming trucks coming from the east or from the west.
I think we have that issue with the gas station up here on the...
Then you'd be looking at two separate ingress egress, right, instead of just the one coming out, which you're showing.
Yeah, and the volumes, you know, from the truck, traffic volumes relatively low for the size of development.
I get it.
Yes, there will be some, and we'll do our best to manage it and have them go in the correct direction. I would not recommend deciding.
Yeah, no.
Certainly.
So incoming is ten to twenty a day, is the estimate?
From Russell?
From Russell.
Well...
No, coming up East Street, not the employees, but the trucks coming in.
Todd, what did you tell me? What's your total truck, expected truck traffic in and out?
As far as in-house, sixty.
Sixty.
Both back and forth, so thirty.
Thirty in, thirty out.
Thirty entering, thirty exiting.
Trucks a day?
Yeah.
Of your trucks or?
Yeah, my, my.
No, no, I'm talking about the trucks that are coming into your facility that are not...
Ten to fifteen, so it would be twenty to thirty trips because you're going in and out. Worst-case scenario, obviously, we're, like you said, about the right-hand turn. Obviously, that will be posted at the least.
Yeah, and going out, you can control. You can say it just goes that way.
You can try and control.
Yeah.
You can try.
I mean...
We can certainly strongly recommend.
I just wanted to wrap up a couple other things. Why don't you guys maybe some more traffic questions, and we'll bring Scott back.
Just very quickly, staff gave you full reports, both from planning and from your town engineer. As pointed out in the staff report, really, the use on this site is a permitted use by site plan approval. The reason we're having a hearing tonight is because of that portion of the site that's within the two hundred and fifty feet of the special review area that prompts a special, or a public hearing, special permit application by your regulations. But the use itself, the warehousing and the truck operations is permitted in this zone. And actually, I always was a little surprised by this myself in reading the regulations. But that C P T zone allows buildings up to four hundred thousand square feet, which I'll just say I was surprised. But we're forty thousand square feet, so it's considerably less than what, in theory, you could put in that zone. What we do need to do now is to go over a little bit over the special permit considerations, because it is a public hearing, and staff did point those out, but we can do this as briefly as we possibly can. As pointed out in Robin's report, we have special permit considerations, starting out with a suitable location for the use. And as pointed out, it's zoned in the C B T zone. It is site plan review for warehousing, distribution, and other office locations. So I believe the location is suitable. The structures and use of activity, as we just stated, we, distribution and warehousing is allowed up to four hundred thousand square feet. We're at forty thousand square feet, and we meet all the dimensional setbacks and standards for zoning, you know, for side yards, front yards, coverage, things of that nature. Neighborhood dependability, we're located in the zone. The one stipulation is we have the one property that is a butter, that is an R forty zone, so that prompts the two hundred and fifty-foot special review area. We believe we've done a good job in addressing the concerns that might be expressed there with our birmingham, our landscaping, and just the general design of the site. We put all the heavy-duty truck loading operations and things on the east side of our building, far away from that area. We have suitable access and parking. I think we've demonstrated that. We meet the parking requirements. And then using the two driveway system, we've split common employees and visitors, you know, park cars from the truck-oriented facility by using the two driveways. We have suitable streets. Both Russell and East Street are town roads. They're both in excellent condition. Actually, East Street was completely repaved this summer. We have adequate emergency access around the building and throughout the forest. We have public, we have utilities. We're going to be using something system approved by the Health Department and our own onsite water system and fire protection. With environmental protection considerations, we have a permit from the local wetlands agency, and we have no direct wetlands impacts as part of this proposal. And we're creating a conservation area on that southwesterly triangular piece. We are, as far as being consistent with the purposes and plan of conservation and development, we are again in the C P T zone. This use is permitted in this zone. Our forty thousand square foot facility is substantially smaller than what would be the maximum allowable, if you have to four hundred thousand. And the use itself falls under site plan approval stipulations. So we believe that we meet all the special use criteria. We think we've addressed what we see as the design concerns. We've offered a very substantial landscaping plan, minimized the site lighting, positioned the building as far away from East Street and from neighbors as we possibly can. And at this point, I'd be happy to answer any questions that either the commission has or possibly from the public.
So the paved section over on, to the west, that's just for parking overnight?
Yeah, it's parking trailer boxes. Some of them may have merchandise in them, some of them may not. And it's part of his business to go provide that service to existing local businesses in the area that need a place to park their box truck maybe overnight or for two days or something like that. The way he explained it to me is that basically that was moved around by his folks using yard goat type machinery, not the big tractor trailers. So they'll pick up a box trailer and bring it over there and park it, and it's quiet, until they go get it.
I'm sorry, are they offloading into the warehouse and then parking it empty?
Potentially.
And then pulling, or sometimes the trailers that are parked in the trailer parking area have, lack of a better term, merchandise?
Yeah, could have merchandise over there. Maybe, maybe not.
What distinguishes, like long-term holding versus short-term, or, you know, value of the...
It's a mix. It's definitely a mix.
Value, value of the load?
Yeah, well, that's always, you know.
And what you're finding, I see, because we work in a lot of these different facilities, is sometimes Dollar Tree, I'll just use Dollar Tree, we've done that, you know, there's big warehouses over on International Drive. They have three boxes that they literally just don't have any place to put. You either park them on the exit ramp on ninety-one, or you find a home department. It's a good business, part of the business model for this facility is to provide that.
So it's basically rental space?
Yeah, some of it, some of it could be. But again, remember, those, the way that's laid out, too, is it's one of Todd's employees going out there with the yard goat truck and picking it up and bringing it over to the facility. We don't see third-party people backing their equipment in there.
So they would come in through the main gate drop, or the main driveway, and decouple from the trailer?
Yeah, or Todd will go get it and bring it over here.
Do you guys have, do you have any other questions?
Quick question for Robin, maybe just a clarification.
Sure.
The "No Through Trucks" sign on Seymour Road, that's at the discretion of Board Slackman, right? That maybe, I'm thinking maybe be used on East Street as well?
I think that that's something that could be discussed with Board Slackman.
Why are you shaking your head?
I suppose it could be done as a town ordinance or something, but if "No Through Trucks" says the state defines it, that's not...
No, it's not, I mean, by state, no.
And Google doesn't recognize it.
Right.
Or any of the other services that point us in the right or wrong direction.
Nobody's got any questions up here? Anybody from?
My name is Steve.
The podium, just get your name and address.
My name is Ruby Ransom. I live on thirty-three East Street, been there for thirty-seven years. Own one of the historical houses with the Stone Foundation. Now, Hunt and Marvin have a parking lot on Russell Street. Your sign says, "Go right only," and they're all over our street. Sunday morning in the snowstorm, six-thirty in the morning, the snowplow was trying to plow Crystal, and the Marvin truck goes through. They're through all the time, day and night. Now, what is going to stop his trucks from making the left-hand turn and coming? He's already telling us that his trucks from other companies will be using East Street. We also have the contention of Bramble Bush and the fifty-eight duplexes that are going in there. What does, how does that leave us? You put up a speed sign at the end of East Street, it only works half the time. You put up the stop signs on the corner of Russell and East Street, and if nobody's around, the cars go right through. They don't even bother to stop. So what is, and I'd like to know, they have all this construction and trees and dirt coming in. What road are they going to use to bring all this stuff in to build this facility?
Well, they have the dirt there already.
Okay, what about the trees and the metal building? We also have the trucks that come in with the car carriers. The car carriers go by our house all the time, day and night. And Mark's crush trucks, empty trucks come in, full trucks go out. They go down East Street all the time. I'm sorry, but I know he did a survey, but you have to live there and contend with it twenty-four hours a day to know exactly what's going on and how many vehicles are coming in and going out. Do you have any answers to my questions?
What's your question?
Well, I want to know how they're bringing in all this equipment to build these. They're all going to come in on Russell?
I'm not driving.
If you want, you can ask the applicant if you'd like to respond to it, I think. But at this point, there's no engagement between the commission and the public.
Okay, all right. I'm just putting it out there that this is what we contend with every single day, twenty-four hours a day. We've been there for thirty-seven years.
Todd, do you want to, do you want to make a comment on how you're, would bring this, bring everything in?
How you're proposing to bring in your equipment?
Well, the first, the building aspect of things.
Well, let's, why don't we, why don't we let the public make all their comments and then, you know, and then let Todd address them?
Okay, fine, thank you.
If he wants to.
Yeah, well, I can address this very quickly.
Todd, please, if you...
Yeah, we'll just wait. I, yeah.
Let's get a summary of questions.
Anyone else?
Martha Daniel, went to go on Crystal Drive. I've been living there for year two thousand. We bought the house. It's right in my backyard. It takes me five minutes going through the wetland and among their property. And I can see the fence from my house. So that's telling you, I can see the white fence on Russell Street from my house. When the leaves are all gone, the wetland, I have the wetland in my backyard. Right now, I can see the white fence. So if I can see the white fence, you could imagine how close it's going to be from my backyard, considering that I'm going to have to have the smell of the diesel all the time. And the noise from six o'clock to whatever time he said that they would finish if they truly finished that time. So you can imagine how nice it's going to be. It's not only for me. I got all the people in, my neighbors on that side of the wetland, all going to feel it. So I would like to have at least, I enjoy my street, I love my street, and I don't want to be known as the East Granby Gary. That's, that's all I have.
Hi, Justin Ginsburg, forty-six East Street. I'm the inconsequential house that's abut in this. So, look, I think I speak on behalf of my family. We certainly understand progress needs to occur. We certainly understand land use needs to be used. We've lived with Mark for many years and done so in perfect harmony throughout car shows, et cetera. I think the challenges we have from our property are perhaps different to the neighborhood. We have to look at this monstrosity. Berms and trees and so on are all great, but I'm assuming they're going to be tiny little seedlings that are going to take God knows how long to grow. We're going to be looking at huge trailers from our second-story window, our first-story window. I have an eighty-year-old mother. I've just moved out from Australia and have just built, the commission just approved an extension for my eighty-year-old aging mother, who is going to have this as her backyard. This is what she's going to wake up to every morning at six o'clock, and this is what she's going to go to sleep to at ten o'clock. From a traffic perspective, the stop sign does deadly squat. I sat in my driveway this morning and counted twelve cars that blew through it on my way to work. Trucks blow through it all the time. From the applicant, I think we've heard an intent to try to do the right thing. But if you can't direct those trucks off East Street...
Can you direct it?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. If we can't direct the trucks away from East Street, it's going to create additional traffic snarls. This is a historic neighborhood, historic homes. This is not what we purchased. This is not what East Granby stood for. This is not what we wanted to raise our families in. And you've got a new development that you're wanting to attract families into this community that are going to be on East Street, living with a complex like this that should not be in a residential area. And I recognize that the space has been zoned, that it is not just residential. However, it has huge implications to what it is East Granby is trying to achieve. So from the little inconsequential house that is being affected by this, we are really being affected by this with no additional consultation at all. Thank you.
Brian Manito from Harvest Lane, couple of house, couple of street down. I was in the warehousing business many, many years ago, and I've seen some of the bad trucking companies go out of business quickly. St. John's Berry, Sullivan Trucking. I see that we have a warehouse and a trucking company right here in East Granby that was put in probably twelve, thirteen years ago, and they're out of business, Ross Express. Nice warehouse, lot of parking. Maybe our applicant might want to look over there for a already-built storage facility, even closer to the airport. My other concern for the council here is, that's asphalt, right? And on the very edge of it, it's wetland. And on the very edge of it is wetland, right? What happens when we have a rainstorm like we have tonight? What happens to that wetland? There's no permeable materials that can just absorb that rain. It's flowing down into the wetlands. Top is going to flood the houses on Crystal Lane. Just a consideration for the council to maybe answer a question about. Has the study taken that into consideration? I'm sure they have. They're the experts on that, but it's a concern of mine. Yes, just, hold here. I throw that question out there.
Yeah.
Has that been addressed?
They have a wetland, they have a wetlands approval.
Yeah, they have a wetlands approval.
And the town engineer has approved the drainage system.
For that much asphalt?
I'm not the town engineer, so I'm not going to get into the specifics. We have a letter here to sign off on it.
They did the calculations and, and they're, you know, they have the water basins to, to collect and then drain the water out. I mean, that's, that's all been designed for that specific property where it is, based on the...
Yeah, and I've walked that property many a Monday nights over the last twenty years. And I know it's downsloping from Russell Road to the back. So another thing, hopefully they took into consideration. Thank you.
Paul Tilling, Two Sunrise Terrace. My question for the developer is, maybe to make some comments on what the developer-owned vehicle fleet looks like and what percentage of that fleet would be registered in East Granby.
All right. Hi there. My name's Susan Groot, thirty-one Crystal Drive. So my sentiments go those of the other residents that just spoke. One thing that hasn't been addressed yet is the fact that Copart just was approved for an additional seven hundred vehicles, and that was not taken into account with the traffic count, as far as I am aware. Also, I don't believe we should include traffic counts from two thousand and ten, fourteen years ago, because that's not relevant to what we have going on today. I've lived here a year, just barely over a year, and I'm just amazed by the changes that East Granby is allowing. And again, not only was Copart, or is Copart, abutting wetlands, but again, we have the smell of the diesel, we have the noise for sixteen hours a day, we have trucks coming in, what did you say, probably the average of fifteen of other trucks, not to mention thirty going in and out, so sixty, I believe, was the count of theirs. Then there's the light pollution, which will be there day and night, the views from the people about above the property. And then, of course, Bramble Bush, and you're going to have families there you want to attract with children. As it is now, I can't even walk down East Street to visit my daughter on Harvest without at least one truck passing every single time, regardless of what time of day it is. Obviously, I don't go at night when it's dark, but I mean during the day when it's daylight. So, yeah, I have a lot of concerns, and those are just a few of them. Thank you.
Lisa Mendy, thirty, Crystal Drive. I'm opposed to this. I'll start out by saying that in June of two thousand and twenty-three, my neighbor and I met with Robin Newton, Director of Planning and Economic Development. She said towns don't typically include warehouses and distribution centers and transitional zones, yet East Granby does. And someone else tonight said they were surprised at that also. It was her professional recommendation that it should be removed. In fact, she said she was going to have a meeting with the town within the next few days, and she would make the recommendation at that time. However, when my neighbor called and later emailed to find out about the outcome of that meeting, Robin never answered. Second point. Fire Chief Larity spoke at length about his concerns regarding fire suppression for the proposed warehouse at the Economic Development Commission meeting on November twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three. It's worth watching the recording, reading the minutes from that meeting, definitely watching the recording. He had some serious concerns. Also, Jet, Jonesers, their website says that their operation, twenty-four hours a day, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, and that includes holidays, apparently. And that's not what we're hearing tonight, so why would his website say that? But he's saying something different. Also, in two thousand and eighteen, Windsor Locks created a truck ordinance that won't allow trucks over twenty-six thousand pounds from using parts of North Street. Obviously, a move to East Granby, you know, takes care of that problem for him. A fully loaded tractor trailer is eighty thousand pounds. An empty one is thirty-five thousand. So twenty-six thousand pounds, obviously, he can't conduct his business very well in Windsor Locks. To add that additional large tractor-trailer truck onto East Street, it's running trucks and car carriers all night long. We had this discussion about Copart, them trying to limit, you can't limit these trucks. These trucks come in when they come in. They come in all night long. And, and those really heavy trucks, they literally shake your home. They shake you sometimes when you're in your bed in your home. I mean, it's very distressing. And personally, I'd like to know why the Economic Development Commission would even entertain something like this. Why is this even in our transition zone? We, we want to have restaurants, we want to have retail. Why are you adding more trucks? It just does not make sense to me. And, uh, let me see, my, one of my last things I want to say, and I also thought truck maintenance wasn't allowed. And another thing, somebody said the words, "out of sight, out of mind." Okay. This bright orange is where everybody here lives. This pink is where Jet is, and this green is where we are. And for you, it's out of sight and out of mind. And for us, it's very much in sight, and it's very much in mind. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Brian Benito, ten, Harvest Lane. I didn't state this earlier.
There's some who wants to comment online as well. I'm not sure if anybody can hear.
Do you want to let him go first? All right, go ahead.
Gary?
Oh, sorry. I didn't realize I was being called on. Hi, everyone. Wish I could be there in person. I'm working out of town tonight. Gary Ginsburg, forty-six East Street. You heard from my wife, Justine, a few minutes ago. And, um, yeah, I have a number of questions. And so, from the sound of the plan, it sounds like Mark's, um, car parts shop is still going to be in business with that operation having some truck traffic and, and business activity as left intact, as well as this new enterprise, warehouse enterprise. Do I, do I have that correct? Just a point of clarification was unclear. What the plan is there?
I...
I could just leave...
I don't know that we know what Mark's intentions are. He's not really involved in this application.
Right, but as of now, the, the applicant is just offering to buy every, everything to the west of Mark's, but not Mark's itself. Is that, is that what we're seeing?
I think that's, I think that's accurate, accurate, yeah.
Okay. So then, if, we'd have two businesses back-to-back of a industrial nature, and if Mark decides to sell, who knows what would become of that. So as, as the occupant of forty-six East Street, I see a lot of uncertainty with the industrial, semi-industrial nature of our land as, as it's transforming and moving up towards East Street with now this sprawl from a grassy area for car shows and Mark's home to, you know, obviously, this industrial growth. So that's concerning. I support the concerns that my neighbors have said about truck traffic. Noise is unclear to me, how much till ten o'clock at night or twenty-four, seven. As one person spoke about the website, how much noise is associated with their loading and offloading and moving things around on site? So I don't know if you need some kind of a noise survey to fully vet that, but it's unclear just how much noise is going to be associated with these different activities. I'll mention drinking water. The water at our house is too hard to actually be treated with a water softener, so it just is really not potable unless you want to be drinking rocks. And we understand that Mark's property has a well that also is too hard to be treated. So it's, you know, we've had the Culligan-type folks in, and they really don't have a great answer for us. And so, um, I, I'd ask the question, with any new development, why would you want to try to treat the water on site? I don't know, maybe they've done test pits and found out that they can drill and get good quality water, but that would be a question. And if not, if it's as bad as the water at our house, have they looked into piping in water from nearby areas, especially on East Street? There's a, there is MDC water, probably three hundred feet from my property, so not that far south down East Street. Have they looked into that as an option, or are they sure that they're going to be able to treat the water?
Well, I think, I think the water, the water that they were... The water that they were referring to was fire, you know, for a fire hazard and storm drain.
The air pump is potable well out there, too.
And what's that?
They're going to put a potable well up there, too.
Yeah, yeah, they're going to put a well.
What are they going to use to flush the toilets and for their employees?
Yeah, they're going to have a well. I don't think that the toilet cares how far the water is.
Well, except that, except that it does damage your pump. We've had to change our pump, our well pump, within the last five years, because the, the hard water...
We're kind of getting off, we're getting off track here, and it's getting, it's starting to get pretty late. So, I mean, just kind of try and stay on track.
Sure. Well, just in terms of, are there any potential benefits to someone like us if water was plumbed up into this?
So are you, are you asking if, as part of this application, would they pay for the MDC to run water all the way up to Russell Road? Is that what you're asking?
Basically.
Okay. That's not something that we have any control over.
Raising it as a possibility.
Okay.
So I know that the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection had been out a number of years ago to look at a potential groundwater and I think soil pollution issue. I don't know how that was actually started, investigated, resolved, would have you, but will there be a property transfer, environmental investigation that goes along with this transfer? And if so, we certainly, as neighbors, would like to see the results of all of that. So does this have to go through deep regulations? And related to that, it was unclear to me whether the truck business that's being proposed is actually going to be repairing and, and maintaining trucks. How active a auto garage or truck garage are we looking at here?
So, Dave's going to answer.
Gary, it's David Bressard. Regarding the transfer, that only has to go through deep if it's a manifested hazardous waste. And I don't think hazardous waste has been manifested on that site, mostly oil, petroleum, that doesn't count. It's about due diligence. You know, whoever's buying the property, do they want them to investigate it or not? As long as there's no consent orders or any significant hazards, property transfer would go right through without going too deep. So it's like a due diligence, definite thing. That, that would force them, that would force them to actually do some investigation if they have, man, they're selling a property and they manifested waste, hazardous waste.
Right, so it's not like a super fun thing, or is it?
No. I mean, it has cars sitting in the, but that's what have to go through.
Have we heard the number of employees at this business? And I heard the idea that it may grow. But what is the applicant saying now about number of employees? Which would include, you know, car traffic going to and from?
That doesn't really have any bearing on the application.
Well, as a neighbor, don't you think we have a right to know how many, you know, employees?
If the applicant wants to answer that question, you can. When, when, when all the public questions are over, he can address any one of the questions that he chooses to answer.
And just for clarification, was there a zoning change associated with this, or this has been zoned this way all along?
It's been zoned this way for quite some time.
Yeah, it's been zoned this way. There, it's... Yeah, the, the only reason that they're here in front of us with a, a public hearing is because of the two-hundred-and-fifty-foot...
Perfect from President.
Thank you. That's, that's what I was looking for. Other than that, it would have just been a staff approval.
Got it. And one, I think one final question. We noticed that there are three blue areas. I think they are some kind of retaining basins for, is that stormwater or...
Yes.
Will they only be filled occasionally when it rains hard? Is that the idea?
That'd be an engineered question.
I'll put that, I'll put that question down for the, for the engineer.
I mean, what are, my basic question is, what are these things going to look like? And how visible will they be from my house?
I don't think you're going to be able to see them at all. Are there any other questions?
Can, can the owner, can the owner comment on the twenty-four, three sixty-five?
Can you stand up here?
I think she, she already made the comment, so it's up to the owner to decide whether or not he wants to comment on his hours of operation on the website.
Okay, yeah, that's on the list. All right, is everybody, any other questions?
My name's John Barberino. I've been before this board years and years ago.
Hi, John.
Hi, hi. I'm the gentleman that built Copart, was Hartford-Springfield. I also own one fifty-three Rainbow Road, which is Enterprise. And I've been through lots of transfer acts. I know about them. The question about a transfer act absolutely, positively does not apply to this property. It's for, I, I could tell you about there's five places that would if you had a taxi derby, a printing shop, a dry cleaners, so it doesn't apply. That's out. Okay? When I first came to Granby, I bought a house on the runway zone. All right, I knew it. I knew what I bought in nineteen seventy-three. Airplanes are going overhead and overhead. Well, that was an industrial zone before thirty-seven years, forty years. So I don't want to say buyer beware, but if you bought it there, it's there, and it's going to come and get developed. Took forty, fifty years to do it, but it, it should happen. But that's not really why I'm here. I learned something from that Hartford-Springfield auction. I learned something from that Hartford Springfield auction. That if Dave or Todd is it, can change, it'll save you a lot of grief. You put that edict on me of a right-hand turn when I built Hartford Springfield. What I did wrong is Russell Road runs east-west and I quit the exit straight, perpendicular. I put the, don't turn, don't turn left. No, I'm sorry, don't turn right, you gotta turn left. But with a little car, they turn right, okay? If you think about Russell Road, what you got going here, I'm making these numbers up. You've got 140 MSL at one end. It dips down to 100 MSL, goes back to 140. All you've got to do is take that driveway that comes out, back onto, uh, Russell Road, offset it like 10 degrees. You've got a truck, he can't turn, he can't turn left. Just offset it, just like that, that truck's forced to go right. It's that simple a cure. No truck will, a car could do it, but a truck can't. And I didn't know that, but live and learn. But that's the way you, when you get these applications, if you want to keep trucks from turning, that's the way to do it. You can't keep a car because a car will go and turn. I guess that's a look like a K turn. But that's what I wanted to say is that zone was there. You guys approved it, or your grandfather's did. People bought there, they, they zoned that Crystal Lake or whatever that's called, whatever. They knew what they were doing. It was right up against the thing, just like when I bought against the airport runway. I knew it. So it deserves to be there. You guys wanted it there and now it's here. And it is not subject to the transfer act. Just make that little change and you'll never have a truck go that way. Thank you.
Anyone else? Todd, do you care to answer any of these questions?
There were a lot of questions.
I, I have a, I have a bullet point if you want to come up.
Because it's getting late and there was a lot of comments. Why don't we continue this if February staff will put together a list of... Todd is not inclined, he does not, I just want to put this for the record. This is public comment, not public question and answer.
Question, right.
So he's not inclined or obligated to answer. But I think it would be a good neighborly thing to do to answer as many of those questions as possible. And I think to put him on the spot with as many comments as we just had would not, not be fair to him.
Yep, so we'll continue this one to next month also. We'll put a list together that you can review. You can choose to comment however you like on those comments.
I would be more than happy to. I mean, we're gonna be neighbors, that's just thinking, you know? Neighbors need to work together to enjoy.
But these questions, uh, I don't know.
Paul, Laura and I have been taking notes, so we'll make sure we get a list together for him and it's recorded, so.
Mr. Chairman, would I just ask questions?
Certainly.
Regarding the issue of whether or not to prohibit left turns for the trucks on the east driveway, without asking too much, I'd like to know how strongly the commission maybe thinks that? Because I'd like to spend the time with staff to come up with an alternate driveway design.
Well, we're gonna extend, we're extending to next month.
Well, I'll go so far as to say, I believe I adjusted that about 45, 50 minutes ago.
We've got one vote.
Right, and I think, and I would correlate it to the result we have down at the Cumberland Farms on Route 20.
Right.
Where, sure, the, uh, the little sedans, when no one's looking, bangs the left.
Right.
Okay, which is 120-degree or 130-degree turn.
Yep.
But I've never seen a box truck, let alone a tractor, go out and hang a left.
Yeah.
And, and even, you know, larger vehicles, it's fun watching an SUV break the law and hang there because they end up bumping up on the curb, throws them out of alignment, good luck, or tire blows, whatever. Yeah, but that, that is effective and I, and, and Mr. Barberino, I recall when we were working on the relocation of, of the auction, I recall that and I, I recall that the commission thought this is the only thing we can do to keep what we need to, which is to keep the truck traffic. And at that time, you know, it was a long time ago and we didn't even think that East Street would really be, you know, a point of contention here. But looking at it now, it's like, it's the best thing we could have done for that site was to do that and to make sure that the traffic came down through Bradley Park, through Kreipes, through perimeter even, and up north around perimeter up and through. It's like, you know, just really good.
Ever gonna extend Bradley Park Road straight? That's what they promised me.
Right, yeah, exactly, exactly, which would have, which would have, you know...
Yeah, that settles everything.
Yeah.
But it kept it off of, um, when Coparts came, was that just last? Was that two?
Last month.
Was that last month?
Yeah, no.
Yeah, it was the same, the same argument, the same discussion came. It's keeping the traffic flow from heading westerly so as to go on to the intersection at East. And, you know, I, I know that the applicant, at least I feel the applicant would like to make this happen, like to make it work. And your suggestion certainly would be something that if you were to look at and reconsider and perhaps when we continue next month, you know?
Yeah, sometime between now and next month.
Yeah, that's fine, I just wanted to see, you know.
I think it would show the community that you, you know, that you really do want it.
Yep. Excellent.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. In that case, we can move on to application 2316. East Granby Planning and Zoning Commission Zone Text Amendment, Section BF4 Height and Area Regulations. I'll read the, uh, number three. Not right now. They can do whatever they want, I don't care. Uh, application 2316 by commission for Zone Text Amendment, Section BF4 Height and Area Regulation for, um, Village Center Zone.
All right, so I hope this is gonna be quick because this was just an oversight. I'm gonna take the blame because I don't know why it didn't get redlined when we had this conversation. But we changed the maximum height, um, in the Village Center. We created the nodes with the different heights and then, um, we missed the maximum stories. So we left the two and a half stories.
I thought that's...
Clearly doesn't make sense with the 40 and the 50 feet. So, um, it was brought up to me when I was having a developer meeting and, and we went back to the notes and we had discussed it.
So is it number three?
So it didn't get changed. So I'm proposing three and a half for the 40-foot, um, Route 20, Route 187 node and four in the Route 20 East Street node because we went to 50 feet for the height.
Okay.
So those are, are averages based on, you know, building stories and height?
I'm sorry, just, you gotta take me through specific offset on the two nodes.
Yeah, so, I don't know if you have my...
Yeah, probably do.
So, and I also included a map. So the, as you guys know, the town, um, Village Center plant sort of had these bubbles and, you know, diagrams that weren't super specific to properties. And I found it very difficult to sit down with a developer and be like, oh, wait, which node are you in because they're bubbles? So I have highlighted in colors the nodes for clarity um, so that we know what we're talking about when we're looking at that. And so when someone comes in, I can pull up their property and be like, oh, you're in this East Street node or you're in the, you know, Village Center, you know, 187 node.
It might just speak to you right from here and look at that. Sorry, that's blowing my mind.
It's blowing your mind?
Yeah, it is, I can't, I can't really figure out what we're talking about.
We're only talking about maximum stories. That's the only thing we're talking about.
Well, I know, but, but I just want to make sure that we're clear. So what you're looking to do is we changed the building height.
Correct.
But we didn't change the total story height.
Correct.
But when you go and say East Street node, I guess I, I got East Street on the ground.
Oh.
So you're talking that portion.
So where we changed it to 40 feet tall, I'm proposing three and a half stories.
But is that, where does, where does Village Center end on East Street? Like where does it end on 187? I thought it ended at 187 at the church. It continues across the street to the Premier Brook property. Is that where we are?
Yeah, so here's the red, the outline. The Route, uh, 20, 187 node goes down School Street just a bit.
Yeah.
And then encompasses this part of the Village Center. So that's, that's that first node, which has the 40-foot height.
Yes.
And then starting in the middle of School Street and going down to the East Street intersection, um, this, this area would be the 50-foot tall node.
Okay, I, I know where you are now.
Okay.
So you see, if you tell me the properties, if you said Bill Wilson's property, which is no longer Bill Wilson's property, I would know.
I wish I knew all the owners of the properties, but I'm not.
I would, I would know that that's the property in the East Street node.
I got you. So it's very minor, it's just trying to rectify that difference because it, I don't know how it got missed, but it did get missed. So I wanted to try to fix that because we do have people who are asking for development in our Village Center.
Does the public have any questions on any of that? Or comments on any of that for the height?
It's just the height, that's the only thing that's open for conversation.
The only thing that's open for?
The stories, sorry, the stories, the story height, yes.
Well...
The building height's already set.
Right.
Stories.
It's how many stories.
Mr. Mendy, 30 Crystal Drive, is the story height, um... What, what is the story height?
They're changing the two and a half stories to three and a half and four to correspond to what's already been approved and changed, which is the maximum height of buildings, which is 40 and 50 feet.
Is that, um, according, did you check with the airport for that?
It's not in the airport zone.
It's not in the airport zone because then they cut all the trees down. I, I am against that and I will tell you why. Because it, everything's overlooking our neighborhood and...
The height's already been changed. This is just making the stories match the height.
I was against it at that time.
Yeah, that's okay.
Against it still.
Okay. Any other que, comments from the public? Okay, so we never really officially opened a public, public hearing.
It's officially open.
We'll officially close it now if I can get a motion to close it.
Before, I mean, is there any, I don't think there's any concern or conversation.
I don't think so.
We went back to our notes and I tried to be consistent with our conversations, so.
Right, and with what we've already done.
With what we've already done, yeah.
All right. Um, I'm gonna move on to number four then.
No, 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 no.
A motion to close.
Um, I'm sorry.
Close.
Yes, we were closing the public hearing. We never really made a motion to open this.
You, Ashley Roberts rules don't require you to make a motion to open or close. Yeah, you can just, as chairman, say it's open.
Okay, all right, well, that's closed then. Other comment on any non-agenda items? No, okay. Uh, can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
Some of, September, October, or November?
November.
November, yep. Um, anybody have any comments on the?
We might have a problem there. Todd, were you there?
I was gonna abstain, I wasn't there.
You weren't there, we can't, we can't act on that.
You're gonna have to table it.
Okay. Uh, communications, uh, just mixed all my communications up. So we do have a resignation from, uh, Charlie, that he had to resign. And we have a, um, recommendation from the RTC.
Do you want to share that now?
And, uh, yeah, in a minute, when we get to...
Why don't you share it now, since it's communication and you got it right there. That way when we go down to 7A, we can just make a motion.
Yep, it's, um, Jay Tran, Jay Tran was the recommendation, uh, to fill Charlie's position.
And not have, I'm sorry, not have... Todd, weren't you elected as an opener?
Charlie's a, no, yeah.
No, you don't have a desire though to?
No, not at all.
That would just, that, that would be typical product.
Right, yeah, yep.
I'm not trying to...
And, um, am I missing, I'm missing a communication that you gave me?
It's just minutes from Williams.
Oh, okay, and we have, and, and we got the minutes from Williams. Old business. Zoning.
This is new dates.
Oh, okay, and we received the dates for the planning and zoning for 2024. Zoning enforcement report? Anything? Okay, good. Uh, planner report?
No administration of set rules.
CROG? Uh, I don't think there was a CROG meeting.
Coming soon in, um, March.
Okay, so...
Maybe if we have a, a new member, we could send a new member.
I was gonna say, I think Charlie was going to those, so we're probably gonna have to look to have somebody attend.
Well, that's usually whoever the newest guy is, is a CROG guy.
Tag your it.
All right, so, uh, application 2020. Application 2313 is, um...
Continued.
Is continued. 2315 is continued. Can I get a motion on 2316? To approve, uh, 20, 2316?
Yeah, I'll make motion to approve application 2316. East Granby Planning and Zoning Commission, Zone Text Amendment, Section 5F4 Height and Area Regulations in VC Zone.
I'll second that. Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye, aye, aye.
Close. Okay, uh, in new business, we do have a recommendation from the vacancy committee and I'm pleased with the recommendation of Jay Tran.
Could I? I'd like to make a motion.
Oh, okay.
I, I would like to make a motion to replace, uh, Mr. Charlie Allen, who's been a valuable member of the East Granby Planning and Zoning Commission, who is stepping down from his, uh, seat. And I would like to, um, recommend and nominate Jay Tran to replace Mr. Allen and have Mr. Tran serve as a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
I've got a full speech all written down.
Until the next municipal action.
Yeah, but I used nice words and everything.
I thought mine was pretty nice.
Let's pass the speech tonight.
I'll second that.
Did you say anything nice about Charlie?
Yes!
Oh, okay.
I'll second that. Uh, any discussion on that?
No.
Any problems, all's in favor?
Aye. I move a German?
Second. All's in favor?
Aye.
Local authority.
Do I get a new nameplate?
You do!
No.